Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, December 4th, 2017. Does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Without objection, I'd like to adjust the schedule, the agenda, to accommodate our treasurer's schedule and let her give her treasurer's report next.
It's okay.
Melanie.
Thank you for doing that. One of the pieces unperforming tonight, we haven't even rehearsed yet, so...
You're hoping to rehearse tonight?
Yeah.
What time is the concert?
Eight o'clock.
Oh, good.
Are you saying?
The rehearsal's at seven.
She plays violin.
Oh, no.
So, we can just go through this quickly. As you can see, it's all about taxes. Is there anything else interesting there? Oh, that insurance payment, you probably know about. This was from the truck...
The tandem that flipped over.
Yeah, the flip. So, this was just an insurance payment that came through. So, that's what that is. Nothing else there is particularly interesting. Anything here? Oh, I think I talked about this at the last meeting. I've given the... I transferred the first million dollars to the school for their taxes. I'm expecting to pay the balance of that fairly soon. Okay.
Melanie, what's a roaming reimbursement?
Oh, that... I'm sorry. Yeah, that was... Somebody was traveling and he used our credit card, and then he paid us back for what he had incurred while he was... Who was it? It was...
I actually forget who that was.
Yeah.
But that's what it is.
Yeah, sorry. That's what it was. Okay, so that's what's in the other funds. No surprises. Do you want to go down to the budget status? You can see, as I say every time, we're at almost exactly the same place in revenues, and we're going slightly behind last year. That's, as Dave always explains, not particularly real money. It's just a difference in timing in some of the expenses.
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing I wanted to talk about was delinquent taxes. Did you see that there? Yeah, there you go. So, I put this together just... I just gave the delinquent warrant to Mert this past week, and I thought you'd like to see how they've gone over the years. The number I think is interesting is the number of people delinquent. You can see, this is our best year ever, and even of those 113, some of those were just people who accidentally didn't get their payments postmarked. They brought them to the post office, but they didn't get them stamped by hand, so they didn't get postmarked until the 13th. Then, I don't know. Mert might show mercy to those people. I'm not really sure. It's out of my hands. But, so, actually, the number of delinquents is probably, I'd guess, around 105 or so, so it's much better than previous years. That's a good trend line. The dollar total there looks to be exactly average, but as I say, I think that it's better than that, really, if you include the ones who've already paid. So, I think it's looking pretty good with the delinquent taxes. Mert, I think, has all this stuff in his hands now, so those letters will be pulling out, and he'll start his part of the equation. So, did you have any questions about any of that?
Anything that we can brag about that we did to produce that downward trend line in number of delinquents?
I think a little bit of it is that I accept postmark, which I'm pretty sure my predecessor did not. It had to be in his hands. So, that would be a few of them, but I think it's only fair to accept... I mean, people who did their due diligence and got to the post office on time, I don't think they should be punished if the post office is slow. So, that's probably a little bit of it. Part of it is just that the economy is better. I mean, you see that the trend line goes back to the worst of the recession there, 2009. If it took it back farther, it would probably go down again.
And a lot of these are going to be people that just are late, right? And are going to take the penalties and pay not...
Yeah.
This does not represent everyone. We're going to have to put a lien on their property.
Oh, God, no, no, no. This is just the absolute first stages. And some people, you know, in effect, treat it practically like an installment plan with very heavy penalties, but, you know, it is hard to put together that kind of money for something.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't think... I'm not doing anything particularly different. I just think it's probably a sign of comparative health in the economy around here.
Well, we have... We did increase the penalties over the last couple of years, right? Bill came in and wanted to...
I think you're...
...charge an interest?
No, that's... I think you're conflating a couple of things. What Bill had for a couple of years waived the late filing penalty on the Homestead declaration.
Oh, right.
Which is a sort of a standard thing that the town can waive or not, but there are real costs associated with that, so we decided not to waive that anymore.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to talk about was... Tim, you sent me an email about putting a PayPal button on our website. Wanted me to look into that.
Yeah, that was brought up by one of our citizens. Michael Gardner was indicating there are some fees, which I'm not very familiar with. Maybe you could explain them?
Yeah.
That people might be able to pay through the web portal if we had that ability?
I think the problem with that is that with PayPal, the person on the receiving end pays the fee. So, with the municipay thing that I'm hoping that we can get, it's the payer pays the fee. If we had them both, nobody would choose municipay. Obviously, they would rather have us pick up the tab. And we would have to have... I mean, it's not completely impossible, but we would have to have a budget line for those fees, and it would mean the rest of the town subsidizing it for people who use it. And I don't know whether we want to... It doesn't seem fair to me. I think that people want the convenience of using a credit card. I think they should pay the fee themselves.
Yes, yes. Now, when you brought that up with us, was it just to pay taxes, or was it to pay all fees?
Oh, we... I've talked about with Marlene, and it would be for everything, and she's particularly interested in having it for dog licenses because people have to, you know, schlep to the town offices, and they'd much rather be able to pay it online because it's such a... It's a recurring and standard.
And is municipay something that we could set up on the web?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's sort of the whole point of it. I mean, I think she would have to have a machine for swiping or whatever you do these days, but...
Well, that's my question. Is it something you have to come in and plug your card in, or is it something we could set up on the web?
No, we could do it online.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, that... Yeah.
Yeah, so it seems pretty clear. It needs to be one or the other because...
Yeah, no, let's go with the municipay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I didn't... I was thinking that... I wasn't remembering well what we were going to use municipay for. I thought it was going to be some... People were going to come in with their credit card, and you were going to stick it in your machine, and it was...
Yeah, that too. I mean, I...
So, is municipay a service that we have to pay for as well?
No, that's the thing that is completely free to the town. A lot of towns use that. I mean, I think basically that's... They have something similar. It might be identical at the DMV. If you try to pay with a card, they tell you it's going to be whatever it is, 1.5% or 2%, right on top of it. And, you know, if you don't have your checkbook, that's a convenience that you might be willing to take, but it is a fairly significant fee, especially if you're talking about a tax bill. So, when we do set it up, we're going to want to be very straightforward about how much people are going to be incurring. It's got to be stated right up front because it could be, you know, over $100 for a fee. You've got to, you know...
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember the first time I paid my license tags online with a credit card. They didn't tell you the fee ahead of time. I think they've changed that, but...
Yeah.
It was only a few bucks, but it still bothered me that they said, "Here, do you want to play with the credit card?" And I said, "Yes," and then they said, "Great, that'll be five more dollars."
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, but you could add that that's on your tax bill. It could be really significant.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to look at the reserve funds, it's, you know, there's nothing much to say about it. There's... Where is it? Yeah, that one. You can see, as usual, the only activity in there was the... It was water because waters are... Water payments are coming in right now, so if you look down at that 260 line, that's all water payments.
Mm-hmm.
The only other... Unless everybody has questions about the reserve funds?
Uh-uh.
The only other thing I want to say was that we had Jordan from the Sullivan Power back again last week, and I think he's got everything he needs going forward. I did a couple more adjustments that got him the trial balances, so I'm hoping that they're going to put the audit together. I don't know whether you have a timeframe on that right now?
Should he have it by the end of December is what he's looking at.
Okay, so it's going to be a pretty quick turnaround for the town report. They're later than we wanted them to be, but it looks like they at least now have everything they need.
We bought a new fire truck? Sorry, I'm looking at the fire truck.
Oh.
We're a couple hundred thousand short on the fire truck.
I saw 190, so it's a beginning balance.
Yeah.
This is also doesn't include fiscal '18's contributions to this yet.
Right.
Because the reserve funds haven't been put in for this year.
Oh, yeah, that happens soon, right?
Yeah, as soon as you're done collecting.
Oh, that reminds me. One other thing I want to talk about. Probably in the next meeting, I'm going to hope that we can add to the warrant the refunds to people who overpaid their taxes. I'd love to have it in people's hands before Christmas. So, that's something that... Last year, there was some questions about turning that around, but I'm hoping to have a warrant ready for next time.
Okay.
Melanie, one more question. The Airepac loan, what is that?
Oh, that's ancient, and I don't know why it even has its own fund. It seems crazy. And I actually, I thought that Sullivan Powers kind of made it go away, but there's...
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
It's just a little bit of zombie money.
It's a Jordan question.
Except it's even negative.
It says negative, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they had played with that when they were here last year.
Yeah, it's from...
It slipped over from the fire department, which is...
Many years ago, way before my time. Yeah, those things with negative balances are, you know, it loses 63 cents a month and sort of not something we think about all that much, but...
How can we continue?
Yeah.
So, I mean, is that just an accounting artifact here, or is there real money involved here?
No, it's just an artifact. It's just sort of... I could ask Jordan to make it go away. I mean, all that's going to do is say... Because this is just one great big bank account, it would just be reallocated. It would mean that it could be zeroed out, and all the other ones would go down a little bit as a percentage. And if I... I actually thought he had done that, but that's a good point. I'll ask him about it.
Yeah, it would kind of be good because...
Yeah, I know, it's messy.
You're going to bring this up again a year, and I'm going to have forgotten about it and ask you the same question again?
Yeah.
Okay. Good?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Break a leg.
Oh, thank you.
Just don't break your leg.
Okay, so we changed the schedule a little bit to accommodate the treasurer's schedule, so we're back on track now with approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes. We're a little bit behind on those. The first set is for October 16th, and it looks like we were all present at that one, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 16th as circulated by Art Whitman, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Corrections, additions? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So, the minutes for October 16th are approved by a vote of 5-0-0.
4-0-0.
4-0-0, because Tony's not here. Yeah, I'm going to have to borrow your pen.
I'll toss the pen over there for you.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Okay, and then November 6th, we had everybody but Tony was there, so we should be able to handle that one. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
From Art, seconded by Ken. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the minutes for November 6th are approved by a vote of 4-0-0. November 20th, looks like everybody was there. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for November 20th as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art, seconded by Ken. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the minutes for November 20th are approved by a vote of 4-0-0. And then, for some reason, it came out of order, November 14th. Joe was not at that one, so we have three people to approve that one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for November 14th?
So moved.
Moved by Art, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stating?
Yes.
So, the minutes for November 14th are approved by a vote of 3-0-1. Okay, that takes care of minutes. Next up is warrants. First warrant here is check warrant number 16 in the amount of $41,679 for a Dodge Ram. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. I heard him first.
Okay, good.
So, this is the pickup we've been talking about. The crew looked at it. They decided they liked it. We opened the bids last time. This is being bought with reserve funds. It's not... We're not requiring debt to purchase this truck, as we hope is the case from now on.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 16 in the amount of $41,679 is approved 4-0-0. Next, I have payroll warrant number 11 in the amount of $19,887.95.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant number 11 in the amount of $19,887.95 is approved 4-0-0. Lastly, I have check warrant number 17 in the amount of $171,333.82.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken.
Big number.
It's a big number. There's probably a new truck in here. Items over $1,000 are $2,000 to Bennington County Sheriff, $3,000 to Edward Legacy.
That's for the trees taken down at the transfer station.
Transfer station. $42,000 to North Bennington Water Department. That would be paying for water for six months. $100,000 to People's United for tax anticipation.
Yeah, that's the tax anticipation.
Paying back the tax anticipation loan that we got, so we borrowed some money in lieu of taxes. Now, we're paying that back.
Sure did.
Just a few months after we borrowed it.
So, that should leave a zero balance with them. Is that right?
Yes.
That should be paid off.
It's completely paid off, yes.
Okay. $2,700 to Sycamore Landscaping for cemetery mowing, $6,600 to TAM for transfer station services, and $2,100 to Weyy Mee Daily. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 17, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, check warrant number 17 in the amount of $171,333.82 is approved 4-0-0.
Dave, on this first one, on the check warrant there, that description, 2017 Dodge Ram?
Mm-hmm.
Thought that was a fourth bid. Don't worry about it.
No, 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 they didn't make a bid.
Okay, my mistake.
Yeah. Yeah, they made a lot of inquiries, but they decided not to make a bid.
Yeah, okay.
All right, announcements. First up, I want to mention that in March 2018, there are a number of openings in town government that come up as people's terms expire. In the case of the Planning Commission, it's not because people's terms have expired. It's because we've been... We've had two open seats in the Planning Commission for over a year. We're still looking to fill those, so please, we ask people to consider serving their town in that capacity. Also, on the DRB, we have one current opening on the DRB and two people whose terms are coming up for reelection in March. Also, there is one alternate currently serving, and as I recall, Tom, you like to have two alternates, don't you?
We have no alternates.
Jay is technically an alternate, but he's serving as the fifth person, I presume. Isn't that right?
Mr. Palmer has passed away.
Oh, of course. God, I'm sorry. It's embarrassing. Yeah, I knew that. So, we have...
We have four full board members and zero alternates right at this point in time, Tim.
Okay, so you need one current, two that are coming up for reappointment, and no alternates, so you'd like to have two alternates?
That would be conscious, Tim. That's correct.
Okay, but you'd take any that you could get.
Right about now, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Right, right. Any other announcements? Okay. Public comments. Lynn Sternberg, you talked to us about an energy initiative you'd like to see the town consider. Would you mind coming up here so we can hear you better?
Should I sit?
Take the big chair, the comfy chair.
The special chair. All right. As I mentioned earlier, too, obviously, we're here. I attended a meeting in Manchester, a group that is affiliated with 350.org and 350 Vermont, which is trying to further our attention to the state of Vermont, reaching its goal of renewables by 2050. And 90% is seen so far away, but this is where we should be going. And so, I'm here tonight to request the Select Board of Shasberry to agree to warn a resolution for town meeting, to commit to take further local action to achieve the state of Vermont's goal of 90% renewables by 2050. And this is something that has been drafted by 350 Vermont, and I gave Tim Skoggins the draft paper.
Yeah, I... She gave me the draft here. For the sake of brevity, I will skip to the part where it... What it asked the town to do. It gives some background information on the importance of renewables, and it says that the town will do our part to meet these demands by committing two efforts such as protecting town lands from fossil fuel infrastructure, denying easements or agreements for any pipelines crossing town lands, enlisting state support in weatherizing town buildings and schools, and installing alternative energy such as rooftop solar to town structures, or initiatives ... Other initiatives to improve the quality of life while helping to reduce overall use of energy. So, it's more or less a statement of intent. There aren't any hard requirements put on the town here. What I would suggest is you let us take this, distribute it to the Selectmen, take it under consideration, and see if it's something we're ready to endorse, which I think is what you would rather us do.
It would be our first request and otherwise to put it up to the community with signatures.
Right, right. Good. We're happy to do that. Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Hey, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Do you have an electronic version of this? If you can email it to me, it's more convenient.
So, do you want me to then scan it and email it to you?
No, I can scan this. I just thought if you have one that's already in a PDF or a Word document, I could do that.
I did not have the opportunity to get one.
That's fine. We can deal with this just fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Mr. Corey, welcome. Would you like to join us up here?
Can I get a copy of the test results of PFOAs at the well site of the Newtown Garage?
Absolutely. Those are public documents. David, can you provide those to me?
We don't have them.
Well... Oh, at the Town Garage. You're talking about... We have our semi-annual report that we do.
But we don't... No. Let me suppose that's... You're asking for the well for the Newtown Garage?
Yes.
Which we don't have. As I was explaining to you, it won't be drilled until next spring, and then we'll have test results.
I talked with solid waste back in the spring.
I've been busy this morning. I haven't got it.
But they told me that Shasberry has agreed that that well would be tested for PFOAs before the garage was built.
I'm sorry, we've been over this a number of times. The Madison Well you're talking about?
No.
That's not what I'm talking about.
I am talking about the state solid waste that Casey Catherine told me that before the Newtown Garage was going to be built, there's going to be a well drilled for the Town Garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is going to be tested for PFOAs?
That's correct.
So, I'd like to see the test results.
And you'll get them in the spring, like I told you, when we drill the well?
No, you haven't told me anything.
Well, the well hasn't been drilled yet, so we can't give you any test results for it.
Return my phone calls. You might have got voicemail, but you never left a message.
All right, are you here to address the Select Board?
Well, he was addressing me, so I'm not sure.
Okay, let's... We welcome your comments, so if you're asking the Select Board for a report that on a well that hasn't been drilled yet, we cannot provide that. When the well is drilled, those results will be public record.
And is the garage going to be built before the well is tested?
We have not made building the garage contingent on the test of that well. We've explained many times over many years our position on the well water there, and I would refer you to previous comments.
And I'm still with the same comment, is I think the well should be tested first before the Town Garage is built, and that's my opinion to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we are in budget season, and tonight we have members of... Okay, we are in budget season, and tonight we have members of several of our departments here to talk to us about their budget needs. Beginning with the Developmental Review Board, we have our chairman, Tom Hunchark. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, let me introduce Tom Hunchark, I didn't meet you.
Tom, Joe.
Oh, all right, nice to meet you. Everyone else I know. So what's on your mind this evening?
Well, how are things over at the DRB?
Well, as we discussed just a few minutes ago, we are shorthanded on the Development Review Board. We have four full-time board members, myself, Chris Penessi, Michael Biddy, and Michael Day. And I know some of them are coming up for renewal, for reappointment, so on and so forth. So far, I have not heard anyone not willing to re-up, as we say. But again, that's what I've heard. Regarding the alternates, as we all know, we've had the untimely passing of Mr. Palmer, and therefore our alternates are down to zero. Of course, we would like to see as many alternates and full board members as possible, only to make sure that we have continuity and there's no interruption in service to the public. So far, with the four members that we do have, we've been keeping the ship afloat pretty well, and I can say that I'm proud of every member on the board for doing their due diligence. And that's basically the report right now that I have. We've had, I apologize, we have been beating the bushes, though. We've been trying our best to recruit new members, but.
I was going to say, how do you entice people to do this?
You know, it's, I find it rewarding. But again, that's a personal, obviously a personal opinion. I've gained a great deal of knowledge over the, I think, five or six years that I've been on the board, and I don't foresee myself not renewing unless the Select Board takes a different tact, and that's their prerogative as the Select Board. Enticing new people, that's the real key, is where do we, how do we engage people to look at service to the town? So we do our best, recruit, put the word out on the street, and see what comes to fruition. So far, this is where we're at right now.
What's your budget? Because this really is about the budget. You really don't have any expenses other than.
Not really, no. Some services, lawyer fees. We have, of course, our stipend, our yearly stipends, but besides that, there's some, I believe there's some training in there.
There's some training in there. There's five hundred dollars for training.
Five hundred dollars for training, which.
A thousand for legals, eighteen hundred for different professional services that might take up. It's pretty much the same budget. The only thing changes is we dropped the recording fees for the town clerk because we don't charge those, we'd be charging ourselves at this point.
Right.
That's the only change in the budget.
Right.
But you've been, I mean, it hasn't pushed any of these in the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, yeah, we've been pretty constant with it.
Very good.
So you've been, you've had a year with the new budget, with the new bylaws rewrite. What is your experience with that?
The feedback from the board is, the board members at large are comfortable with the rewrite. A lot of the areas that were, a lot of verbiage that are in table form or in graph form tend to make the understanding and the reading of the bylaws a lot easier. The public at large, when they come before us to prepare, when they're presenting their hearing, and they're presented with the bylaws, I would like to see, and this is out of my bailiwick, this actually belongs to the Planning Commission, only because Shelley reports to the Planning Commission, is to maybe have the applicants a little more prepared and understanding with the bylaws, that the requirements of those bylaws prior to coming to hearing. But besides that, we find it a great improvement over what the bylaws have been and how they were constructed in prior years.
Good.
And again, let me just clarify one thing, that, let's call that criticism of Shelley is just, is something just to, for something for us to look at and see if we can get a little better preparation and make the process a little more, a little smoother, just for the sake of those who come before us. Because people have to realize that it is a legal proceeding, and they should be prepared as much as possible before coming in.
Haven't we talked about the fact before that the zoning administrator is, has to be cautious in how much help they provide to people in terms of, with the bylaws, because she can't be seen as, you know, essentially providing counsel to people who are petitioning the DRB.
My understanding is the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator can guide the applicant regarding the specific bylaws that they must meet. It's the Development Review Board that cannot be used as an advisory capacity. That does violate state statute, so therefore we must stay clear of that. A lot of times, we do, or I have gotten phone calls in, on several occasions, in very general ways of what's the process of performing a certain function. That, I don't feel would violate the state statute, because I'm not, we would not be addressing a specific need of that individual. But on the other hand, that really falls under the zoning administrator's bailiwick. Again, from my understanding, and if I'm incorrect, I will stand corrected.
So you're saying the one thing that could be improved in the process is people coming to, before you with a better understanding of what bylaws apply to their request?
Exactly. So if they could, hypothetical situation, a zoning administrator is presented, they want an application, that zoning administrator then recognizes the fact that it has to go before the Development Review Board. That zoning administrator would then produce the specific bylaws to the applicant, explain to the applicant what the requirements of those, because it is written in somewhat of legal ease, and it can be confusing at times, even though we've made great improvements. With that guidance by the zoning administrator, then we would feel the applicant pretty well prepared to come before us to present their case. And what that would do is improve the speed and accuracy of the overall hearing process, because at times, some of the hearings can drag out a little bit because there was some confusion, and that's what we're just trying to reduce.
Everybody's singing off the same sheet of music.
Absolutely. That's all we're looking for. And again, I don't think it's, it's just a suggestion. I think we're on the right track. Shelley does a fantastic job. We couldn't be happier with her administrative skills and her due diligence. Again, it's just something I think we should look at.
So it's not as simple as just a checklist, because the checklist would change every, because of the bylaw, that every, every bylaw would have a different checklist.
Right. Every hearing could possibly have a different checklist. So I understand, I think that's a great start to have a checklist, but sometimes you'd have to intervene within that checklist and add or subtract different things, and also sometimes an explanation of, well, when you go before the board, you need a map. What's really, what is the, what does the Development Review Board really want to see on that map? And again, I'm just using this as an example, and explain it to the applicant. This is how your map should look, this is what should be included on that, so on and so forth.
Okay. By the numbers.
Yeah, just by the numbers, that's all. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice to meet you.
Stay in here. Have a great evening.
You, too.
Next up, Chris Williams, chairman of our Planning Commission.
Hello, Chris.
Hi there, everybody.
So, do you need any more money?
Well, I think your budget is telling me we need less. And, you know, based on Tom's description about what percentage of the budget we're utilizing, I can't object. So there's very little activity that impacts the zoning administrator going on presently in Shasbury, so seems reasonable to take a budget cut.
We did trim planning about a thousand dollars, and that really reflects the fact that we're bringing down the amount we've had budgeted for the zoning administrator, because each year she hasn't used the amount budgeted, which is kind of reflected in the drop in the applicants over the years. And she's cut her hours back voluntarily. However, there is a good upshot this year. We have done more permits this year, and income has gone up to seven thousand dollars in fiscal seventeen, which is three thousand over the prior year, so maybe turning a little corner.
So when somebody presents an application and there's a fee for it, where does the money go?
It all goes into, there's a line in the revenue section for all the fees go into.
So it's a lot like the town clerk?
It's a lot like the town clerk now.
It goes in the general fund?
Goes in the general fund, it's all budgeted in there.
Because they used, did they used to keep it years ago?
No, well, I don't know. Never since I've been here. All the fees go directly to the town there. All the checks go into the town.
So maybe you want to tell the board a little bit about what the Planning Commission has been doing the last year?
Well, first off, at the last meeting this past Tuesday, I spoke with Shelley Stiles about the budget situation, and she said that she really had difficult time to stay busy with hours that she was submitting. And so, you know, I said, well, I'm going to this budget meeting on Monday, what should I bring to the Select Board? And she didn't have any objection to the budget cut, and she thought it reflected how things were with her job presently. And so, as far as Planning Commission goes, we've, well, all right, here's the pitch right off the top, is that the early part of the year, we struggled with not having enough people to have a quorum in our meetings. So that has been remedied, but we have three, which means that everybody has to be there or we don't have a quorum. So, you know, we recognize that it's not strictly the Select Board's job to recruit members, and that we might have a better handle on who would be appropriate. And we've been beating the bushes, but so far to no avail. But we'll continue. We're always on the lookout for new members. Beyond that, we've been working this year largely on economic development issues, and it's spanned quite a wide variety. Some of it was assignments from the Select Board to look at the country store situation, which we spent a lot of time in the summer and fall working on. And I think we've presented a realistic report. I don't know if it, you know, it has a conclusion that maybe we'd all like to see, which is, well, it's just getting new incarnation. I think there is some question of how viable that is. We've looked at other issues relating to trail development in Shasbury, that experience of surrounding communities has been that trails generate a certain amount of economic activity. We have a town forest on the top of the ridge in West Mountain, out in West Shasbury, between West Mountain Road and Shasbury Hollow, and we've spent a lot of time investigating, hiking around that area. We think there's a possibility in there would have a huge economic impact. No, it wouldn't, but it might be worth doing just the same. Every little piece is incremental to the whole, so.
And just maybe as a, you know, a thing to do, I mean, providing, pointing out that there is access to a municipal forest, just for the people that live around there who might want to walk to it and say, look, we're in the town forest, if nothing else.
People still hunt West Mountain quite often, or?
Well, we've run into a variety of people on the trail. One neighbor who lives on Blueberry Hill Road is really proud that we've met her a couple of times. She seems to do these trails, summer, winter, spring and fall. Very outdoorsy person, and I think that, you know, we could say that there's a contingent of people like that in Shasbury who utilize this. This is a very steep trail. It's not for the faint of heart who might want to take a stroll on the Robert Frost Trail, which is a little less challenging. But, you know, I think there's a variety of people who would utilize it if it were kind of, it was endorsed and marked and developed a little bit, and this would have to be a lot, but, you know, and all of a sudden, we place it so that it shows up on the internet and it becomes one of a couple of different trails in Shasbury, Round Lake Shasbury, the Robert Frost Trail, you know, we start to develop a variety of offerings. And so, we think it's worth pursuing. You know, other things we've been looking at is the Iron Kettle Motel situation, which is not described anywhere in our zoning bylaws. It's not multifamily housing, it's not a motel, a hotel, and we've been, we're saying, well, there's too many people involved in this for it to be kind of outside of local zoning. And so, I spoke today with the Division of Fire Safety in Montpelier and talked to them about what the life safety concerns were, what that agency's capability of inspecting facilities like this would be. And so, we're slowly working toward what we think is a resolution of this, and it will require a zoning amendment, because it's neither a hotel, motel, or multifamily housing. It's too big an operation to be left outside of local zoning.
And I think it's worth pointing out, in our discussions, we don't feel like there's anything happening at the Iron Kettle Motel that we wouldn't, that we disapprove of or want to discourage necessarily, it's just that it's a situation that's not described by our zoning, and should something come up in the future in a similar situation where we're not well-equipped to deal with it, because it's not, it's not described by our zoning. Would that be fair to say?
Right. I would add to that and say that this is, the model that we see there at Iron Kettle, we see in other places all around the state, in Bennington.
Bennington's got a lot more.
Right, you know what I'm talking about. So that, you know, this is, the old model of motels is pretty much non-functional, it really doesn't address today's market for the most part. And so, we have to look at what redevelopment of these properties might mean, and, you know, whether it's people who receive benefits from the state, whether they're people of state places in these facilities, whether they're employees of local industry, you know, it's a pretty broad spectrum.
Who owns the Iron Kettle now?
John Peckham, who is the owner of Peckham Industries.
McDealy's, yeah.
Yeah, it's not connected to the corporate structure, it's individual ownership.
Same name, okay.
Well, John Peckham, I suppose, at Peckham Industries.
Yeah, okay.
Right. So, you know, we don't have any argument with this facility. We think they've really bent over and invested money wisely to bring the facility up to standards. The Division of Fire Safety has inspected it, they agree that this is what needs to be done to bring this thing up to a new use, and. And so, we're concerned more of the possibility that this is a new model for failed motels. This is a development we could see at Hillside up in Center Shasbury or, or whatever.
Did Mr. Peckham buy this to run it as a motel or run it as?
Not, not as a motel, as a, as yet undescribed, single-room occupancy rental housing situation.
For workers at Daleys or?
Some, some, but not all, by quite a bit. So, you know, it's, it's a situation that has no description i- in terms of occupancy in our zoning bylaws and we feel like it's just a little too big an operation to let it slide and say, well, you've been doing the right thing, we hope you keep doing it. That's not quite, you know, that, that's too wishful thinking and, and we have no issues with that facility. But we are looking at the mo- the business model in terms of what might happen down the road.
I agree.
Well, isn't the Hillman Motel going the same way?
Maybe you know something I don't, Ken.
Well, I was up there two years ago and they asked me to do some work up there. And I don't know, it never happened with me, but I could have got the feeling that they were gonna turn that into basically the same operation that Daleys was. And then after a while, it just kind of went away and, uh, but that's kind of rough.
So what is it, like Section 8 housing, something like that, or am I wrong?
Well, I don't know where Section 8 comes into the whole thing. I spoke with Dan Monks, who's the zoning administrator, director of planning for Bennington, talked to him about their situation. They have two pretty large motels south of town that, uh, they've never really been able to get their arms around in terms of zoning compliance. And so, we're, we're trying to find some middle ground, working in conjunction with the state, because the real issue is life safety in our opinion. And that, you know, these old nineteen fifty's motels aren't designed with fire separations, alarm systems.
So they're not up to code.
Well, right, and this is outside of our authority to, to have any impact on, but at the same time, we want to work in conjunction with the people who do have that authority.
It's only up to the owner, isn't it, to have?
No, code is up to the state.
But I mean, it's, it's up to the owner for the state to come down on the owner to get this going, to get it up to code.
Well, we're trying to look at a way to put in place a process that would say that this kind of conversion is, uh, a change of use under our zoning. You have to go before the DRB and explain and we want to make some type of interface. Now was today's phone call with Division of Fire Safety to assure that life safety is the primary concern, that these old wooden buildings that are all conjoined, you ca- you've got to have a, a notification system, fire alarm system, carbon monoxide system, that alerts everybody in the event of a fire, that it can't be, uh, it, this can't be on the cheap. Compliance with life safety code is first and foremost.
Well, doesn't motels have to have fire alarms in them?
These are no longer motels by any of our definitions.
Are they listed as a night time? That's the problem, how do they?
Well, you know.
Our fire chief is trying to get a comment here.
Have the fires have fire alarms?
I have to tell you, cause we've been at the Iron Kettle Motel several times, um, this year probably about nine times for false alarms. Again, I agree completely with you about, because it was a big surprise, that's the first time anyone, and all these people came out of these kind of individual apartments, if you want to call them. But yeah, they're all conjoined into one building. So, there was no contact with the fire department to me like it would be if it was a new building going up, but they contacted me and said, you know, can you provide fire service and the essential, you know, things that we need to make sure everybody's safe. This just happened and I didn't realize that it wasn't covered under zoning or, or anything else, it kind of just appeared. So we've, we've been going there quite a bit, especially lately, the false alarms and working with that, plus the, the person who installed the fire alarms, so we can stop the false alarms because time has gone missing.
So there is an alarm system there of some sort?
There is an alarm system there and you had, you know, do some things, they're not allowed to cook in their apartments, but yet they are.
So are the alarms going off by themselves or are they pulling them?
They're just going off by themselves when they're smoking in their rooms. So, they have restrictions as, as tenants, that they're not supposed to cook or smoke in their rooms, or like any rules we throw. So, we're trying to, to get ahead of this thing now, you know, like saying, listen, there's a lot of people living in here in these one-room units, you know, maybe couples or single people, but if you can't abide by the rules that the owner, property owner, and the, um, the, the manager of the place is setting, then we have a policy in Shasbury, a reimbursement policy where we can charge you. So, um, but going back to what was said before, having this thing all of a sudden creep up and here it is, and the only way you found out about it is because they're all cleaning their apartments, cause the smoke alarm went off. Well, I could have been fired. And like you said, these were built back in the 1900s, hard stops there, it could be, you know, paper-thin walls and you could work from one end to the other. And it's something we need to address because we've got three other, or two other motels that are vacant and they worry for permanent residents at one time or another, cause I do know people who live there.
Doesn't Bennington have buildings called so?
Sure, yeah, you could talk to them.
Would they have to install firewalls on each unit?
No, I, I, this was part of the conversation today with Division of Fire Safety about this exact question about whether there was fire stopping in a roof flint him so flame couldn't spread over the top, or whether the, the walls between units met the one-hour rating that the code requires.
They had a fire up at the Blue Spruce Motel in Middlebury, where I moved out of there, and it took the whole thing out. I don't know where it started, but it went right down the whole internet.
And this would be a concern. And so, you know, Division of Fire Safety says, we can inspect for a change of use. Now, this situation at Iron Kettle didn't go through the DRB for a change of use, but it surely is not a motel anymore. We don't have anything in our zoning that says what it is. So we're in the process of crafting a bylaw that describes this situation so that it would put the thing through a, a change of use process that if you're not catering to the traffic, traveling public and you're renting single occupancy rooms as part of a housing situation, then you have to come talk to us.
The, the other thing you're gonna get, Chris, is a motel, you're not gonna have your rooms occupied as often, is that you've got it rented as housing occupants.
Right, and even if it was rented every day, or even if you had occupants in there every day, at least they're out at some point, cause they check out time.
Once you're gonna do, you may eat that something tomorrow.
So they can get a line.
Destroy that something.
So this is something that, this is something the, uh, the planning commission is grappling with right now. I wanted to get.
Yeah, we're just talking about the budget.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we're getting apart from that.
It is, it's also though, uh,
Good discussion.
The only time that the, the select board sees a lot of these people is here and I wanted, Chris, to comment briefly on energy also. I know the planning commission has talked about that. Uh, as you know, the, the state has an energy plan that says by year twenty fifty, ninety percent of the state's energy will come from renewables. Related to that, there's been a push from the state out through the regional planning commissions and to the local planning commissions to consider coming up with town energy plans. And, uh, we've talked about that in your meetings, I, I'll let you describe what our thoughts have been there.
Well, it was really the publication of the county, Bennington County Energy Plan by the Regional Commission that kind of sparked our interest and as I read the thing and, and really thought about what it implied, I thought, wow, you know, there's nothing in our community that's gonna tip over life as usual as much as energy. If, if the twenty fifty vision of ninety percent renewables comes to pass, then all the fuel oil dealers will go out of business, all the gas stations will go out of business, uh, we'll start to produce more biodiesel, we'll, uh, somehow move our transportation infrastructure into electric and we'll go charge our vehicles at a couple of charging stations, which are starting to appear around Bennington County. Uh, I couldn't think of anything that would be more kind of transformative than this process. We know that change makes people queasy and that there'll be pushback and, and people will have differing opinions, but the assumption behind it, county-wide energy plan is really that it's market-based, that, that cost of rising oil prices and reflective in diesel and gasoline and number two, fuel oil for home heating will, will be such that the market situation will force a lot of the change. You know, predicting the future is dangerous business and I don't presume to do that generally, I try and stay away from it. But, um, I think this is a, a future for our region that it, it really is gonna require a lot of change and, um, you know, it probably will be contentious as such. Uh, we, we see the edges of this already, but at the same time, you know, clever manipulation of the technology has the ability to put dollars in your wallet. That, you know, high insulation values and structures, you know, heat pump systems for heating, and there's a whole variety of different things that can be done and.
The, the issue I wanted to point out specifically was whether or not, uh, we task the planning commission with coming up with an energy plan for the town of Shasbury. And the, my opinion about that and kind of where we left it with the last planning commission meeting I was at was that we don't have a compelling reason to come up with an energy plan at the moment. Particularly, a lot of the energy plans and the push to see them happen right now is about citing of renewables, where you allow wind and solar in particular. And, um, we quite frankly, don't know of anywhere that we want to make sure we don't have wind and solar in Shasbury. And if, if, you know, if someone has a different opinion about that, I'd like to hear it, but, Michael Chianowski in our planning commission pointed out, you know, we allow, we allow houses just about everywhere. A, a solar panel is not as permanent as a house. And so, why would we allow a house, uh, in a spot and not allow a solar panel there? And it's kind of where that, that ended up. We just, we're, we're looking at a whole, a big effort to come up with an energy pan- plan, cause there's a, a lot of pieces and parts that have to do with inventorying and describing land slopes and uses and all that. It's a big document on, on par with the town plan and its, uh, uh, difficulty. But, uh, we didn't want to undertake that task just to have one, uh, we wanted something we were planning for before we did that, so.
Article in the pa- today's paper about the big turbines may not fit into the... I really didn't read it, so.
I, I read it, Eric.
Okay, what did it say?
Well, it was out of Wyndham County, I think it was the Regional Commission over there saying, no, we're not gonna do wind, that we've studied it and it, it, it's not in alignment with the basic principles that we want to advocate for energy development. However, last week I drove over Searsburg and there are huge wind turbines that have just been installed up there, a lot of them and they're really big. They make the first phase that happened about fifteen years ago look really small. And, um, people have varying opinions about what this all means, but it's there, it's on the ground. And there are people living around there, so what the conflict is gonna be, especially around noise with the big turbines.
Safety concerns?
I'm not sure.
There's about eight of them, Chris.
I think it's more than eight.
Well, there's a lot of them, but I hadn't, I'd been over there a lot, cause I took my boat over to Haven Reservoir, I haven't seen one of them turn a blade all summer.
They, they haven't been commissioned yet. They're, they're just sitting there frozen, but.
They were up on two seventy-nine for a while, sitting there on the side of the road.
Well, that's why I went and looked at them, because I saw them up there first.
Well, I wanted to add this to the, uh, to the list of things that the, the select board is thinking about, along with, uh, we had a citizen come in tonight advocating for the select board to endorse, uh, a renewable energy, uh,
Three fifty.
Inclination, at least, for, for the select board, so it kind of is related to that.
What about hydro, I haven't heard anybody say anything about hy- hydro.
Uh, we, we don't have a great deal of flow, we're up in high country that.
What about Baton Kill?
Excuse me?
The Baton Kill?
Uh, it's not in Shasbury.
Oh, wow.
Perrin Creek and, uh, Warren Brook and, you know, these are pretty small streams, which is why we don't have a lot of flood hazard in Shasbury, because.
It's worth mentioning too, that hydro is not a big part of the state's energy future because of the environmental concerns with, with dams.
Well, Bill Scully is charging head, single-handedly, irrespective of whatever the current philosophy and best practices thinking is, he's just completed his second installation in Powell and, uh, uh, he's kind of a voice in the wilderness, but, uh, he's, he's starting to amass some sort of track record in hydro. So, but I think we don't have very good hydro sites in Shasbury. We don't have very good wind sites in Shasbury. So what we're really talking about is solar. And West Shasbury, the shoulders of West Mountain, along West Mountain Road have excellent solar orientation, uh, areas around Poly Meadows Farm and Center Shasbury have very good solar orientation, so the idea that this will develop, you know, based on market conditions seems pretty believable to me. Does Shasbury need an energy plan to guide this? The state requirements were many and complex and it looked like a whole pile of homework for the planning commission to produce this. And we weren't sure really what problem we were trying to address here, so we were kind of holding it and saying, well, let's see how things develop. You know, we signed off on a expansion of the, the installation up on Buck Hill Road. Uh, we felt that it showed that we had certain authority to, to deal with this situation. We thought that that was a well-perceived project and, uh, no objections were raised, so.
Okay, well, we're going to, uh, to move on, we've got a few people to talk to, but I wanted to get a lot of those ideas, get a lot of those ideas in front of the select board, so.
Okay, good, thank you all. It's good to exchange ideas once in a while.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
Fire Department Chief Joe Vatican, welcome. Fire Department Chief Joe Vatican, welcome. So what does the fire department need for FY19?
Basically, our budget hasn't changed a whole lot from last year's, last fiscal year's. We want to continue with our project in the second phase of replacing the windows from the fire department of this facility down here. I've got almost all ready to give prices and quotes um, to the board on the first phase of, of the project, which falls under the Firehouse Maintenance Fund. And if you remember, we took money out of our equipment fund, um, which was normally around $18,000, brought it down to $6,000. Transferred that $12,000 up into the Firehouse Maintenance Fund. And hoping that within the next two to three years, fiscal years, we could get those windows replaced without having to jack up our, our budget overall and um, keep it, you know, bottom line about the same. And as I said, we're just about ready to start with the first part of it. We've kind of, we've got the prices from Miles of how much windows are going to cost in the first section. It's going to be the worst section. My prices will, will kind of have a little bit of leeway because of the rod of wood that we don't know about that's underneath that siding. But I will keep you apprised, we keep Dave apprised as the project goes along, what we're finding. You know, maybe it's not as bad as we think it is, but what we found so far is not very good. But uh, it will stay within this budget. So if you have to put off a, a window or two till next year, that's what we'll do. It's just the way it's going to be. So if it prolongs a couple of years, it's, it's no big deal for us. Everything else within the budget, like I said, is about the same as I can see.
Yeah, it comes up to a whopping $7 more this year than last year. What's not in this part of the budget is an increase in the reserve fund for the fire trucks. So we did up that this year so we can keep on target for starting the replacement plan every five years.
And we, and we got a really good plan in place for that.
Yeah, I kind of want to talk a little bit about that. If you look forward 15 years or so, fire truck's going to be almost a million dollars or, that's an exaggeration, but, but really. Is there any thought of starting to share municipalities and that sort of stuff when, when fire trucks get to be that expensive? Like ladder trucks, I mean.
We, we do share, no, no, share, our mutually, for a ladder truck. We do have buildings in, in the town, just on the street alone, that would require a ladder truck. You couldn't pull a 35-foot ladder up against it and do any good. I did downsize, you know, a couple of years ago when we took that big rescue truck and brought it down to be our brush truck. Cause the brush truck had to be replaced. So um, I think what we've done is we, we, we've kind of. Well, we bought the, the twins, we call them the twins, the two trucks at the same time. One truck gets used a lot more than the other one. The one down here goes twice as much as the one up north. So we're going to split those two and draw the, the second one out a little bit longer. So we can build up our reserve fund and then, but still stay within, you know, a, a selling, um, so we can get the most bang for our buck when we sell that truck. Not keep it 30 or 40 years. I talked to a friend of mine who's the chief of a fire department north of, and they're about the same size as Shasberry. And he wonders how we can have what we have for what our budget is and everything else. And I said, you know, you gotta kind of think really long-term. You can't think about today because they're going to their town and you're discussing, you know, $500,000 for a fire truck. And I'm like, wow, you know, that must be a super truck. And you know, ours would be a lot less than that, but you know, to go to the town for $500,000 and ask the voters to come up with that kind of money in one year, that's, that's just, it's going to get voted down. You know, person, I think, you know, because you just, you can't do that. So we have a really good plan in place and, and, and it piggybacks off the plans that we've had years before. But the best part about all this whole plan is we're not leasing. You know, we're going to own these trucks when we buy them. And I'm really glad we're getting away from that and even if we've got to stretch them out a little bit, we've got away from the lease.
Yeah, and that's, but it still is a lot of, you know, if you, look, look, 20. And I understand what you're up against, the mandate that you have to go, if they're sold and you gotta change.
Test them and you gotta rebuild them.
I, I understand what you're up against and I'm just trying to think outside the box. Is there any way that you can start having communities share on these super trucks type of thing and that sort of stuff?
It'll be interesting to see where technology pushes that too. This is one of the reasons why you have to keep turning trucks is because the, the technology on the trucks changes. Um, you know, 15 years from now, when we're looking at truck number three, it could be a whole different.
I understand.
Yeah, 2031, you know, you could have a fire truck that looks anything like what we have here.
We projected this out quite a ways, didn't we?
Yeah, so we're, we're a case scenario though, if there was two fires at the same time and they both needed a ladder truck and there was only one.
And then you'd go to be a Chester, who's a call. And we call on each other. We do go that far. I mean, it's, it's not inconceivable that.
Right.
We'll do that. Even Waynestown.
Just, just a comment.
No, no, it's a valid point. And, and you don't know what the technology will turn these trucks into in 20 years.
Right, you won't even have to get on the ladder, it'll do it all by itself.
Robots and everything else, so.
Any questions at all?
Sounds good. You've done a good job, Joe.
I've been reading in the paper a lot lately about FirstNet, this proposed rollout of a new communication system countrywide for uh, first responders, police and fire. And Vermont is struggling with whether or not to join FirstNet. Do you have an opinion or know anything that we don't, don't read in the papers about that?
I, I'm holding my opinion because I've heard so many different things. And it's probably one of the reasons why Vermont in itself is struggling with, with adopt, adopting this. I've been sent numerous emails about it and um, I'd like to see it activated and see it work before I, you know, yeah, this is what we gotta do and spend the money and everything else. Right now, Shasberry's doing okay, you know, we're fine with what we have. And I understand why they're doing this and what they want to do, but like anything else, it's brand new. I'm kind of, I like to wait and see before I.
You ought to get cell service first, Ed, no wait.
Part of the promise, although one of the controversies is we're not allowed to see the contract with AT&amp;T, uh, who is uh, the contractor behind FirstNet. Part of the promise is that they'll move first responders from radios to cell phones and uh, reserve a large part of bandwidth for them. Uh, and that bandwidth would be available to uh, the commit, the, the townspeople for regular cellphone use when it's not being used by first responders. So if he picks up at his cellphone and calls in a, a report, his call is prioritized. But if there's not a fire happening, the rest of us can use that bandwidth for cell service. And supposedly we would get better coverage out of it. But the big controversy is that uh, the, the contract between the government and AT&amp;T is not being made public. And so they're saying, AT&amp;T promises to build more cell towers in your town. But after we pay them all the money for FirstNet, uh, then we find out the contract says, you know, maybe we'll build more cell towers in your town.
That's, that's my point. Just, you hear so many different things, oh, it's going to be great and they go, oh, that's not really what they're saying.
What is the FCC saying?
Like I said, like you said, AT&amp;T is the one.
FCC is the one behind it, I think, so.
On a national program, it'll work out fine. But having worked with the cell companies here in towers and trying to figure out where you're going to send a signal to, state is going to need a lot more towers. A lot more towers.
We got a lot of mountains.
Yeah, and that's the problem is each one, you know, has to be targeted at another one. And sequencing them down a valley is hard. And then you're talking about going to the backside of the hollow, getting up the end there. You're going to need a tower there just to get you back in there.
Yeah, I, I tried to get a repeater out there and they just, you know, to, so we have our mobile radios reach back here and up to the state. And they're like, yeah, I'm about to waste any money because we just have so many mountains and so far out there that it's just not practical.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Marlene Berry, our town clerk, welcome. The, the select board decided that uh, after the current term is up for the clerk, you stepped in at, in the third year of a three-year, what would have been a three-year term for clerk. That when it ended on its natural cycle, we would consider the issue of health insurance for, for the town clerk. And we've decided that that's something that we should do. And that David has pointed out to us that for the town clerk to be seen as a full-time employee entitled to health insurance, that there's a minimum number of hours required, 35.
It would be up to 35 hours.
35 hours and you currently work 30, isn't it?
It, well, it's 25 plus. I, I leave some room for the cemetery clerk position. And I keep it under that because I don't have health insurance. Because Dave and I talked about um, the town would be required to give it to me if I worked too many hours at that point. And I didn't want it. So I'm, I want to up my hours because I don't really always have enough time to get done what I need to get done at the current hours, so.
And we looked at it as, as price factor comparing with other clerks that do not collect fees, uh, which is the big change that we went through here. So uh, the pay would, would, would come up again to be a more realistic level with, with clerks that don't collect fees. And then adding in the health insurance uh, as a single policy uh, for next year. And that's for, for the clerks, that drives the entire increase, obviously. Uh, it's a big, it's about $14,000 overall, including health benefits and our choice card, which is part of the health benefits package.
Right. So that's essentially the, the, the budget issue with the clerk. Are there any other areas of, of concern relative to budget for the clerk?
Uh, no, but just a little heads up, down the road, we're going to be looking at getting some more racks for the books in the vault. I can, I can shuffle things around for probably a year or two, but we've thought about sliding racks so that we don't have to expand the vault, that would expand the life of the vault to put sliding racks in. So that would be something that in the future I'll be coming to you guys to talk about.
Yeah, Judy had pointed that out too. It's an interesting system. You wouldn't have to expand the vault, it, it just makes it much more accessible, everything. You can stack racks and move them back and forth. It's a good system.
Yeah, and, and one of my goals is actually to get things digitized. We do scan a, as we can, we don't have a lot of time yet, but we do scan deeds and all the recordings into the computer now. We don't have, like I said, that much done yet. But that would really help people when they come in to do their searches. They wouldn't have to go in and pull the books. They could find it right on the computer and print it out from there.
But you'd always have the book.
We'd always have the book. We have to have the books, but then the books won't be in and out constantly. And once in a while, a book is put back in the wrong place and I get a little nervous because I think it's lost, you know? It would prevent a lot of, a lot of problems from happening. So, and that's the, the future of the recording, I think it's going to be more digital. The state would like to see that, I think.
So how much, how much paper is required? I guess deeds have to be.
You have to be, you have to have a backup for everything, whether, you know, whether it's digitized or not. And I have, since I've been here, I'm on, I was probably midway through one book. I finished another and I'm probably halfway through a third. So that's in less than a year's time, I've done a little over two books.
These are book of land records?
The land records books, yes.
So those are required to be on paper? What about things like um, select board minutes and those?
We keep those also.
Are they required to be on paper?
That's a very good question. They always have been, so I think it's a good idea to keep them on paper. Because if something happens to a computer, you really want something to go back. That's history, you know?
Well, paper can burn too. I mean, uh, if the building goes down, it's, it's one of those things where you, you have multiple. Those kind of things, if, if we went to that, there would be a system where it would be, we would have a copy here, we would have a copy at RCS. There would be probably encrypted copies in the cloud with somewhere, so. Just, just kind of curious.
Down the road also, just so you know, if you really start hitting the max of your vault, uh, the state maintains their own archives that we would have access to storage and that we can place our own documents in the state archive. I think it's in, I forgot, some town right next to my, my area.
Is that electronically or physically?
No, they'll take the books and store the books in a warehouse because you have to keep the books. The books are the key, the whole thing, and the historical value is amazing. And then it's just a procedure, if someone comes and requests that year, and we're talking about when you get to 50-plus years ago, uh, you know, you can come in and put it down. We have books downstairs over 100 years old, or more than 100 years old. And, you know, they can be stored there, you can put a request, the book will be transported back down here. You can do your research and it gets, gets sent back up. It's just, you know, when, when, when you get to the point, which we're not close to, I forget Judy estimated the years for me at one point, but uh, just when you're hitting the bursting spot, you can take out the back row and send it up to the state archives where they'll keep it. Because otherwise, we'd all be building new vaults all the time. That's an expensive proposition.
Right, and, and most researchers need to go back 40 years. And that's the bulk of, of what is done.
I just have, we voted to have life or health insurance available for our employees. And if they requested the family plan, that would be covered too. Was that still would apply here?
Uh, correct, uh, well, I talked to Marlene, she just requested the, the single plan.
Yes, but in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want, I, you mentioned the single plan, but that's not mandatory.
That's not mandatory.
It's all part of our syst, all of our policy, okay? That's fine.
It's worth pointing that out. Okay, is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't want to send our records to Waterbury, do we?
Uh, yeah, we, we lost some records that were sent to Waterbury in the flood, actually.
They probably weren't in a vault all day.
No, they were in the basement of the building. They had to do it with the wind. That's what I was looking for and they said they're gone.
So I don't see anybody here from the cemetery or the recreation committee?
Yeah, I can cover those quickly because that, we're about 40 minutes behind when I scheduled them, so I'm not expecting them to show up. The cemetery uh, had a slight increase and that was real to just deal with the Grandview Cemetery. Uh, we had to expand the amount we're going to pay for maintenance and that's $2,000, which constitutes the entire increase in their budget for next year. And we'll make that up with some fees from, from the new cemetery we'll be collecting. Uh, Parks and Rec, or Parks and Rec, Parks is pretty much empty these days. Uh, that stands to a budget of $2975 mainly because all the maintenance and upkeep is done as part of the Public Works Department. There's a few things in there. We keep utilities, operating supplies, a thousand dollars for maintenance and repair, a thousand dollars for equipment when we have to buy little odds and ends. And we have to maintain our fancy water system up there now too, so. Uh, but all the work is really done in-house. The only outside person we hire is when we have to open and close the water system because the, the system we have up there has to be done in the proper order and by a plumber, has to be done by a plumber. So their budget is all $2,975, which is exactly what it was last year. And it stays. And the only thing we spent this year, or you know, as we all know, the big expenses were the well for the last year. And we have little projects, but we're searching for more grants that will maybe keep, continue improving things up there.
Okay, good. Okay, well, if there's nothing else on the FY19 budget, we'll move on to the roads report.
Basically, right now, we're gonna look to see if we can do a little spot grading before the roads are completely done. They've been filling some potholes, doing a lot of brush cutting with both the mower and taking down a lot of the smaller trees. And just a little bit of ditching out on East Road to try and clear out some of the culverts on the paved park going down into Bennington. That's pretty much what will go on until the snow starts flying, which is bound to happen at some point. It's nothing in the forecast, but it will happen.
55 degrees tomorrow.
Yeah, I know. But they have made a lot of progress today. They did all of North Road and doing a lot up on Tinkham Road and just cutting back brush. So I'm thinking we'll, we're moving quite well with that tractor now. Give Kyle credit for really knowing how to use that thing and move it along quickly. So we'll look into, even in prior budget discussions, I had talked about adding that second pass onto the mowing contract. And now we're thinking, saving that money and reapplying the fruit to this. We're making a lot of progress, actually, on the brush in a pretty short time, so we'll see how it goes. We have a break here. It's first week in December and there's not a flake of snow anywhere, so as long as we can keep going, we might get a lot of it done before we get any significant snow out here, which is nice.
When do we get our mulcher?
I'm sorry?
The mulcher, when do we get that?
Oh, the paperwork's still, I'm worried about that. Yeah, you know, the grant stuff is slow sometimes, but it's coming. We'll have it for next season.
Yes, still a BCCD grant.
Yep, yep, Bennington County Conservation District. And that's really all I have for the roads.
Okay, great. You got anything for Town Garage?
No, I put this in here, the usual placeholder. As you know, we're waiting for the final draft of the documents we all agreed to, so when they come, everyone will get a copy electronically of those or by paper copy if you like. They'll go to Merrill for a final review and we'll be ready to go out to bid in January. But there's no surprises there and I think it's just a final review.
Good, good. And I wanna thank you again for your careful reading of that and catching a few little details like mismatched dates and those kinds of things.
Those hurt when the bids go.
And we all promised that we'll read that 300-page document from end to end when it's finalized, but I'm glad you're keeping an eye on it in the meantime for us. Okay, contract for Poet System maintenance with KAS.
Yes, we have a tentative date for installation for the required Poet System for this Thursday. Culligan will install the system. KAS needs to, needs a signed agreement with KAS who will do the, excuse me, the engineering and testing, work on that in conjunction with starting it up. There's a big initial startup cost, then in following years, the cost will be about $1,600 annually to KAS and anywhere up to like $1,000 depending on what they need Culligan to do, as the way of maintenance. I was a little curious about that, so I was looking into how North Bank and everything, everybody else is doing it. They have the same kind of agreement with Culligan, they use CT Mail over there and it's the same setup. We'll just continue using KAS because they do all the groundwater monitoring. I did up the budget line for our groundwater monitoring, a couple thousand dollars to cover that cost for next year.
Well, the carbon filter is expensive for that Poet?
Uh, no, they're like 50 bucks. The cost, the maintenance is the testing.
Yeah, yeah, that's where the big expense comes in. And this, the $1,000, right on the required maintenance level there, you can see kind of what the things are. Only the re-betting the tank, that gets up to $1,200, but the rest of it is kind of small things. And that'll all depend on what KAS finds and what, you know, they think they need to do, but the big thing comes into the testing. And that'll be done biannually with, along with the rest of the groundwater monitoring we do, so. So if the board, if there's no objection from the board, I'm gonna sign the contract with KAS and get them coordinating with Culligan. This thing will be, like I said, installed probably Thursday and KAS will be up the following week. I think they need to give it seven days to make sure a minimum of 200 gallons, I think, is passes through the system before they do their first series of tests. And they have to come back in three months and do another series and then in six months and then annually, biannually, sorry. But we'll save a little money because they can coordinate right with the regular testing. It'll just be another stop on the biannual test, so.
Was there something by that date about water flow being really reduced or something?
Culligan, I spoke to Culligan about that. We'll just deal with that as it comes up because I have heard that happens, there's methods to deal with it. We'll just have to see what comes up there. If it becomes an issue, we'll see what we can do. We'll be into the board and work and decide what they wanna do with it.
Now, what happens if they take another test on that water and the water, the PFOA level drops below the state standard?
We'll take that as it comes. What you have, when you read the CT Mail, the operations manual for the systems, the Culligan systems being operated and engineered by CT Mail, has a list of parameters that if your well was testing like 1,000 parts per tonne, which we know we're in here, you know, if it went below this, then the testing would be adjusted and all the way down. Now, we're talking at the very, very, very bottom level of 25 out of 20, you know? I would see where the first year testing goes and then we'll reevaluate with the state. If it keeps coming in at the right level or below, maybe we can back off, maybe we can't. I would say this is pretty open-ended at this point.
And it would involve the resident as well, you know? If we get to the point where we can go to them and say, "You haven't tested above 20 in two years, do you want us to take this out?"
Yeah.
It really would probably come down to what they want.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, you're correct. I don't think we could just say we're done.
No.
Yeah.
So I made the motion that they sign the contract.
Yeah, I was trying to get a total number for that. Is it these 2795?
Well, we approved the Culligan last week. It's the KAS one, which...
We did approve Culligan last week?
Yeah, yeah, because that's why I called them to get the...
Okay, I didn't recall that.
Yeah, I think, I think we said, I think we said, "Yes, we don't wanna hold this up," so we said, "Go ahead and do it."
Yeah, and that's a low figure, but...
I do remember, I do remember, we said...
Good, good.
We talked about minimum bids, nobody else wanted to, and so on and so forth, so...
Okay. But then the next item is the...
Yes, you're right.
The KAS for annual maintenance?
Yes.
So they have a 4525 upfront and then a 1660 annual?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this is just for the, to set up to test and then to do the testing? Okay. So was there a motion to approve the contract with KAS to set up and maintain the testing system at the residence by the landfill for PFOA?
So moved.
Moved by Art, second by Ken. So that was 4525 set up and then 1660 are recurring annual cost. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion is approved 4-0-0.
Next, we have the leftover from the last meeting, the memorandum of understanding between the town, SVSU for use of the firehouse.
Yep, this came up before. We thought we were ready to do it last time. There was actually a six pages and not two pages, but they essentially say the same thing, which says that if the school has to be evacuated, they can, they can move kids into the firehouse. So was there a motion to accept the MOU as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the memorandum of understanding between Shasbury and the SVSU for use of the firehouse for emergency evacuation of the school is approved 4-0-0.
The next item we have is a, I just want the board to be aware of this. We have a gentleman came in looking at our copier, made me a proposal to replace our copier a year ahead of the lease. They made an excellent offer that is actually gonna save us $2,156 over a new five-year lease. They will pay, they will pay off, they will write us a check basically so we can make our last 11 monthly payments to our current lease company. They will ship this copier back, give us a brand-new one that meets what Marlene wanted because I hadn't talked to Marlene. Our monthly savings, like I said, are like $36 a month, you know, over the five years, the savings are $2,100 and we get a brand-new copier a year ahead of when we would've had to replace our current one. So we just started saving money right off the bat and it's the same terms as the last one. Will actually be financed by the same company as the last one.
No brainer.
It's just...
What kind of copier is it?
This is a...
Too good to be true, it sounds a bit...
Well, that's what, if people come in and they...
Yeah, I just, the only thing I can imagine is they wanna put in a really crappy copier.
Yeah, it's a TAS Calfa 3511I. It does more than ours, I can tell you that.
I think, I think with technology, you're just, you're just...
Yeah, it's an interesting thing because I was like, wait a minute, you're buying out my lease and then you're, it's costing me less money?
What, tell me the name of the copier?
It's a Kiesera.
Oh, Kiesera, okay.
Yeah, it's a Kiesera, you know, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a standard brand and it does the same things that ours does. It won't have this on because this is a sort of...
What's that made?
Undoubtedly somewhere...
Korea or China, it's gotta be one of the other.
But I actually don't know where it was made.
Sure.
It's an awesome deal.
Yeah, it's almost too good to believe, I must agree, but...
Yeah, I mean, if there's something about the copier we don't like, what are the terms to get out of it?
The same, just...
Are we locked in for how long?
No, you're not locked in. It's a five-year lease, just like our current one. And there always is a, it's like the current one, it's a gamble if you start with it and it doesn't do anything. But I would have to go through this exactly because it's not in here, it's in this very small print, I'd have to read again. But there is always an out if it turns out not to be doing what it's supposed to be doing. And mostly it has to do with, the big improvement that Marlene saw in it, currently our scanner, when you scan two sides, the paper goes in, scans one, it comes back out, flips over, goes back in. This one will just do it sheets and scan both sides simultaneously and keep printing them out. And so it runs at a faster speed, again, it's black and white like this one. And the functionality is the same, really. It's just, it's just cheaper.
Yeah. Probably just like everything else electronic, it gets better and cheaper every year.
Yeah. And National, who is a big company, they're just coming into this area, so he's like, you know, we need to, we need to get customers, so.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Let's try it.
Yeah.
So, do you need anything from us?
No, because the annual amount is very minor. I just want the board to know that we're...
Is that gonna cost the town any extra?
No.
Unless it starts smoking in the corner.
Right, right. The next thing is just the personnel policy that we approved and want to go out to review the VLCT. There's gonna be like a $300 charge on that from VLCT.
How to do it.
Yeah, just, it would be certainly cheaper than sending it to our town's attorneys who don't specialize this anyway, anyway, so.
Or a lawsuit.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and that's the biggest thing, you just want it to be approved by them. And that's all I have.
Okay. No other business?
No.
Okay, reviewing action items. Going back a couple of sessions, Dave promises that he has ordered a nameplate for Joe.
It's coming, Joe.
Christmas is coming.
Better rename this show.
He is working, Dave is working on the fixing the 911 address as Mr. Moffett asked for his property up in the wilderness. And Tony is not here, so I don't know what progress he made in getting those numbers we requested in terms of service calls by Bennington Rescue to Shasbury, but I'll send him an email.
I sent Forrest an email this morning asking for those numbers.
Oh, yeah, because he sent us a thing saying, you know, "I wanna be really transparent, what numbers do I bring to the meeting on the 18th?" And I thought we'd already talked about this is what we do.
I sent Forrest an email today saying, "This is what we, what we wanna know."
Thank you.
Let's bring him.
All right. Last time, it was suggested that we check with the hospital about doing the required drug testing for our commercial driver's license employees and...
So we are new proud members of the Vermont Bus and Truck Association and the drug testing will be done at the hospital.
Very good. And the truck, the crew looked at the truck and we approved that purchase. We all had an assignment to read the SVSU emergency plan MOU, which we did and we voted on tonight. We have scheduled BRS, Bennington Rescue Squad, for the 18th. And Poet Plan, we've got the contracts set. I assume we're, haven't submitted it to the state yet, but that's just a matter of...
No, the state does have it.
They do have it?
Because they have to prove it, I was sending an email to Casey this morning.
Okay, so it's done?
Yep, just let me know that this meets all your standards, so.
Before the meeting, Dave and I were noticing that one of the select, we meet on the first and third Mondays of the month and in our calendar that it's not showing up on the first Monday of the month. We'll take an action to fix that. I'll also remind people that our website is pretty non-functional at the moment because of a dispute with our vendor over that. We are trying to get it back, the old website back up to speed with the help of RCS, RIT people. At the same time, we're redesigning a new website and right now it's neck and neck, who's gonna get there first, but we're limping along as best we can. I don't recall anything else that we promised to do tonight. The other, so that takes us to item 17, which is executive session to discuss personnel. We need to review the town administrator's performance evaluation, many months too late and I do apologize for that, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Art, seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
So we will stand adjourned and go into executive session, not, I'm sorry, we're not adjourned, we're going into executive session.